Good afternoon. Thank you for coming. This is our second of three meetings on the topic of armed street parking. And a little introduction. The way we got started with this was, for one thing, this is an issue that has been, it's an old issue. I think every council for 15 years had it come up. But this particular council, while people have lots during the campaign, it was the one issue that came up more than anything else, comments from citizens about the doors and not the car. And a lot of those know more than, if you guys can remember what the issue really is like parking, then we get, it would give any kind of explanation. So we created our priorities. We decided that we had to look at this. There are good reasons why we have the system we have now. But it was mentioned so many times that we felt that we needed to address it, see if there was anything new with the equation, anything more that could be done. Before we get started, one thing I'd like to do is introduce the other councilmen who are here up front. We have Eddie Cott, and next to him is Nick Daly, and over here is John Johnson. And I haven't seen our mayor, Pro Tim Susan Sampson. She's here Monday night. She's been committed to employees at times, but she may be heading to work this afternoon. I would also, and I did not do this Monday night, I'd like to give credit where credit is due. This is John Johnson's idea. The town hall, the town hall meeting is part of it. It's her idea. It's an idea that I think we have proven is a good one, because we had over 120 people, and some people are 160, some people are 170. We had a good number of people Monday night. This is excellent for a 3:00 at the beginning. So it's pretty well obvious, two things, one, or three things, one, it's a topic of interest to a lot of people. Two, we did a good job of getting the word out to people. And three, our, so we're here to listen to you. This is not a time to debate. This is not a time to lecture your fellow citizens. This is a time for us to listen and hear what the issues are, and we'll make some good solutions about it. There's a couple of good things on Monday nights, and maybe there'll be some things come up. Once we've gathered, first, the format will be first, Michael Ross, the city manager, will give you a brief orientation of the problems that the city sees. Then we will have our comments. And if you would, keep your comments to 3 minutes, so that everybody has a chance to talk. We will go for about an hour. And state your name and address. Come up to the microphone, state your name and address. And I will tell you that this is a directional mic. And to make it work, you've got to talk into it horizontally, and you've got to talk right into it. If you get to the side, they'll catch the out the noise in the period. So be sure that it's horizontal, be sure that you're talking right into it as close as you can. Once we're concluded, we will alter sessions. The other thing is, you'll be able to see the comments, which will be up here, writing down the comments as you make them. You'll be able to see them. Don't pay any attention to this, that's for my benefit. I'll be making notes over here of what I hear. But once we're finished, we will compile all of your comments, and we will look for patterns. We will have our consulting traffic engineer look over with those suggestions. They will hold at least one workshop, which is open to the public, to discuss all the work. And we will keep you informed of where that is, as well as when we've done this, so that you are, and you are welcome to come to those meetings when they occur. Are there any questions about the format or how it will work? Okay, with that in mind, I'll turn the meeting over to the city manager, Michael Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Michael Ross. I'm the city manager of West University Place. I'll start by introducing the staff that are here this evening. Our assistant city manager, Chris Piper, public works director, Rick Staple, our traffic engineer, Tim Walker, our police chief, Steve Rawls, our fire chief. We have IT here tonight, Garrett Farland's our director, and Chris Crisoffi is in IT as well. And we have Rachel Moody in the back, who's kind of leading this for us, and Thelma Lentz, I believe is still here, our city secretary. Thanks to all of them for coming and for helping out on this. I will go ahead and go right into the presentation. We'll finish that, and then when it's time for questions, if y'all would just raise your hands, the mayor will call on you, and we'll work through each and every question. Thank you. Okay. The purpose of this meeting, and what we are doing here tonight, for today, is receiving resident comments and concerns, collecting technical parking-related questions, comments, and comments to address with the traffic engineer, and compiling resident suggestions. What we're not doing is recommending solutions at this time, or engaging in debate. The agenda for this evening is welcoming comments by our mayor, which just occurred. I will give the presentation, we will have the public comments, and there's also comment cards for any of you that would like to pull those out in lieu of speaking. And please do note that the meeting is being recorded, both on video, audio, camcorder here, as well as audio, so that we will be able to capture all of the comments and have those forward viewed. This is our citywide street width map. One thing you will notice is that in a two-square-block city, we have 17 different street widths. Typically, in most cities, you have one, two, maybe three, but the typical width is a 27-foot width of paint. That is across the nation, the standard width of the street. We go all the way from 12, 13, 14, in front of the school where the escalators are, all the way up to 56 feet along the university and some other roads. And this street width map is available on our website. We also have some hard copies for anyone that doesn't have access, that we'll be happy to share with you. These are typical city vehicle dimensions. Our sedans, and probably most sedans, are in the 6-foot width, 5'11" width for a sedan. A half-ton typical pickup is around 6 feet 4 inches in width. Our ambulance, the body width is 8 feet. Our fire pumper is 8 feet 5 inches. And our garbage truck is 8 feet 6 inches. And of course, the mirrors on each of those makes it wider when you count the mirrors. But those are at different elevations, so they don't always line up with cars, and they're not always a problem. These are just a few pictures of some typical streets and our different city vehicles going through them. This is a typical 24-foot wide roadway. You'll notice our 8-foot-wide ambulance, and we parked one of our sedans on one side and our pickup on the other. And it's about 10 feet 3 inches between the vehicles. This is a 24-foot roadway. And we've got both vehicles completely parked against the curbs. This is also a 24-foot roadway. We have about 9 feet between the vehicles, and we have an 8-foot 5-inch fire truck, a little tighter. And then this is our solid waste truck. And we have 8 foot 6 inches of truck, and 9 foot 1 inch between the vehicles on a 24-foot roadway. Here's a 26-foot roadway, same vehicles. We have the 8 foot 6 inch body width of the vehicle, and then we have 11, about 11 and 1/2 feet between our parked vehicles. Not quite as tight. And here's a 29-foot roadway. You can see there's even more room on that one to squeeze through. Here's a 30-foot roadway, same vehicles. And we've been tracking, trying to summarize what the suggestions from residents have been. Here's what we have so far. One of the suggestions is to do nothing. There's not a problem. Another is to prohibit street parking throughout the city. Another is to prohibit overnight street parking only. Another is to require a parking permit for street parking. Everyone's require resident parking in garages or driveways. Review parking on a street-by-street basis, more of a case-by-case basis, and allowing parking on one side of the street only. Another suggestion was to possibly rotate sides by odd-even days or odd-even months, et cetera, so that everyone shares the pain. The summary continued. Some say that blocking sidewalks with parked cars is unsafe and against the state law and the American Disabilities Act. Current parking regulations are not enforced. Example is parking over the sidewalks. Fire apparatus restrictions where cars are blocking those. Others do not want police over-concentrating on parked cars instead of fronting. Speeding and cut-through traffic will increase if parking is restricted, some believe. Two of the parking law areas, Texas Transportation Code is where almost all of the parking requirements exist. Section 545.302 outlines almost all of those, where you have the parking distance from the curb, from the intersections, the fire hydrants, near driveways, over sidewalks. All of those are in the Texas Transportation Code. The fire code states, and most cities have adopted the International Fire Code, West University included, says that fire apparatus shall have an unobstructed width of not less than 20 feet, and an unobstructed vertical clearance of not less than 13 feet 6 inches down every public street. Marrying all of this together is a challenge. We want to know what you think, your comments, your concerns, your suggestions. And as the mayor said, from that, the council will review and discuss those comments, along with input from the staff and the city's traffic engineer. And then council will determine what action, if any, should be taken. Here's some other places to go to keep up with this information. On our website, we have a video of Monday night's town hall meeting. We also have the street width map that you saw earlier, and continuous update of all of the emails that we received from residents on the subject. So you're welcome to go visit there. And if you have any questions, of course, we're always available with the staff to answer those. And with that, we'll begin the questions. And you'll just raise your hand. The mayor will call on you, and we'll try to stay with the 3 minutes, and we'll go for about an hour. Thank you.
Hi, good timing, folks. And before I get started, I did want to recognize Mayor Pro Tim Susan Sampson, who came in, who's all here. And I saw your hand first. You want to come over, state your name, your address, and talk directly into the night and try to open the 3 minutes.
Hi, Bob Erick, 2011. My friends come to the city there, and they can't believe what it's like to drive around it. I have one friend that actually says he's driving to drive around West University. I think the best solution would be permits, where you have to pay for it, for people who won't use their garages intentionally, maybe the incentive of paying for a parking permit to help out, also increase city revenues. Really an issue we should see, we get back to working on sidewalks. And that bond was passed, selling point was, that we could walk non-structured on our sidewalks.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm George Baker at 6448 Community Drive. And I confess to having driven to Community Drive to Westview Elementary, and in the course of driving, knocking off the mirror on the car on University Drive. Now, it is true that I stopped, left my name, but that does illustrate how crowded it was. There were cars on both sides, and I was trying to avoid this, and probably wasn't paying attention as much as I should, and hit the mirror on the side of the car. And I also make a point of closing my mirror when I park on Community Drive. So it does seem like there's a crowded issue in the daytime. But all the slides you all presented were all daytime slides. And so what's the problem at night? At night, you don't have big moving vans coming in. Now, you could have a fire truck. But in general, to make a citywide issue about parking at night seems somehow 90 degrees off. That there is an issue in the daytime, as I've just illustrated, is certainly the case. But the nighttime case doesn't seem as compelling. Thank you.
Thank you.
George Norrington, 2712 Center Street, that's it, 26 years. I live on one of the streets that's very, very narrow. It is a problem if two trucks are parked across from each other at any time, and that could be S U B's tip. And there also could be residents, who all have their cars. So two permanent cars is the same obstruction. The issues come from a lot of times, from the laundry, from the gardening services that have these oversized trailers, from construction. But even during non-construction, non-garden times, if you have two large vehicles parked across from each other, I don't believe there's enough room for emergency vehicles. I grew up in a small town to the far north, east of here, in New York City, where we had all the inside parking in order to accommodate the hundreds and hundreds of thousands of commuters that would come into the city, to allow also for services to be rendered on one side of the street on alternating days, such as the people who come and clean up the stuff to keep the storage units clean, garbage picked up and stuff like that. The downside to that, of course, had a plethora of signs up and down the block saying what they, what they do, is kind of another effect. It balances out the pain, though, so somebody doesn't get permanently become somebody else's partner spot. So this seemed to be a workable solution for very large and dense city. I do believe it should be looked at block by block. One size fits all, obviously doesn't work if you have 17 different sized streets. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Sampson, 4111, Kansas City. First, I want to agree with the gentleman there, if you think we could look at it block by block, because it's got the outline of parking.
Just park a little closer to my.
Outline parking, just the same for a 24th street, as it approached 34th, where the street is not reasonable. But I want to address the issue of parking on sidewalks and the overnight parking. If you live on a corner street, the sidewalk, I said, is your driveway. And if you're not allowed to park on the street, you have to park over the sidewalk. So if I can't park on, I have a third car. It needs to be parked in front of my house, in front of someone else's house, or it's going to have to park over the sidewalk. We have that problem that was established a long time ago by putting the sidewalks bisecting the corner driveways. I don't like blocking the sidewalk, but I do need a car.
Thank you.
My name is Vivian Cypress, and I also live on St. Mary. And there was a time when there was a fire across the street, and the fire truck could not get through. There was a time when I was driving, our street is definitely the narrowest in the city, I'm sure, and there was a truck on one side and a car on the other, and I flipped my rearview mirror trying to get through, to get to my house. And I don't know a solution to this. My own thinking was that we should be able to park only on one side of the street, to alternate it back and forth, you know, week by week or month by month. Seems very confusing to me. We all live in such impregnable weather that we can't run across the street, even if it's pouring with rain, sun, or high snow like in northern cities. But I also agree that this should be done street by street. And I feel very confident that St. Mary is in need of help. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Sally Wender, in Elkhorn, 2908 Lockston. We've lived there for almost 30 years now. As I see it, there's several sort of sub-problems, maybe this is a very big problem. To address the parking at night, I don't see that as that much of a problem, parking on the street at night. You don't have the construction people, you don't have the lawn people, you don't have all of that. So I don't really see that as that much of a problem. During the day, however, there are good times where I physically could not get out of my driveway, because people were parked on either side of my driveway so close, and then on the other side of the street, so close, I could not get out. I think a lot of the problems are that residents park on the street. And if you have a perfectly good driveway, I mean, I know there are exceptions, but if you've got a driveway, I don't know why you don't park in your driveway during the day, I mean, or in your garage. I really, we have had some neighbors who have multiple children who have cars, and they're, you know, they park like two of the cars in the driveway to run the street. Well, the driveway will definitely accommodate that. And so I don't know how you make people park in their driveways, but I genuinely think a lot of the solution is right there. And as far as, I don't know how you make it where, you know, I've so many times seen a big truck or parking on one side of the street already there, let's say, an air-conditioned tree, or someone in an air-conditioned truck. And then somebody else will come right, and park right on the other, right across the street from them, when there are plenty of other places, so they wouldn't be right across the street. So I don't know. I guess maybe that every other month or whatever on different sides of the street would help. The only problem that I'm fearful of is that people are going, there are going to be so many parts in it, everybody's just going to be stacked up, and they're going to sort of, you know, approach on your driveway, on the end of the driveway, that that can be a problem that the police would have to look out for. You have to be able to get out of your driveway. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jane Friends, and I'm at 4226 South Western Street. I take drive down the community. I'm fortunate to have a little tiny smart car, so I don't have any problem. However, my thought many years ago was that people whose houses face community could park in front of their house because their driveways are real short. People that roads intersect with community need to park in front of their houses, or alternate sides of the road, however that works out. But community definitely needs to be one side parking only, because you're leaving like this when you've got all the traffic coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rose, 5902 Lake Street. And I strongly advocate that people park where they clear the sidewalks. I know it can be difficult, but I really find that a bit difficult, to have to walk around cars in the street on the sidewalk because they're pretty busy and boring going on. I also advocate an alternate day parking, odd-even days. I think it would be easier than month by month, because I think people are very confused. I'm willing to accept some additional signage. I'm sure it would be in good taste to mark this. And I do think that there are a number of intersections that need to be looked at individually. For example, when I go through several times a day, it's the corner of Plum and Lake Forest, and cars park on both sides of Plum, and it's very difficult to see, creates a blind spot, and you only have one lane to turn into, and I just, I keep cringing for a head-on collision there. So I think parking on one side, we have the alternate day parking, we're going to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cynthia Leslie, 3400 Block of Georgetown, which is one of your poster blocks for bad width. In our family, we have something called the west queue wiggle, which is how we get down the streets. And our block has a lot of teenagers, that means a lot of cars. So people are testy of their territory. I am the defensive parker. I can't get out of my driveway, excuse me, when it's full, when everybody's home. So I can park in the street, or I will back into the car behind me. Answering that one question earlier. I'd love to park in my driveway, but then I would be home all the time. Safety, yeah, questions. If you have a young family and you're out of your car quite often, and the kids are playing, is it less safe to be back in your driveway that you can't see out of them, or to park on the street and have them seelessly? I really don't know the answer to that. Excuse me. On the alternative street parking, side-by-side, sharing the pain is great, nobody really wants to work if somebody else is still helping. How do you, what time of day do you change to sneak out at midnight in your bathroom and hope no one sees you? How do you get contractors to honor what you're going to come up with? Solutions. Are there smaller service vehicles that might be taller but not quite so wide? Are there ways to maybe rework the bays of our driveways and easements, so they're not so perpendicular to the street, but they're curved? When I was designing, I was negotiating with the work crew to see if I could open the angle a little bit. I succeeded on one side, and some days that's the only way I get out. And of course, we can always just not allow people to get their teenagers' cars.
Thank you.
Catherine Perry, 4112 K Street. Two comments. The first one is, about 10 years ago, we had the problem, because I live right across from Colonial Park, we could not get out of the driveway. I know you've heard that. But we petitioned the city, and they made it, a one-side-only parking, and we have not had one problem since then. It really works. The second comment is that I bought a house 20 years ago in West University with a one-car garage. We have three cars in our household. I would not feel real good about being charged for a permit because of the way that I bought a one-car garage house. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keith Cole, 3104 Gerard. We have a fairly barely street, and I want to take just a different approach. Instead of ordinances, regulations, and alternating permits, public workers does a lot of good for littering, recycling. If we did an intensive PR, can manage things, so people don't really think, you can show those pictures to most of the residents, they would think twice before parking the way they park. Obviously, contractors, maybe you could regulate them a little bit. However, I think public workers should try it before we do another regulation. Another thing, you might put a little bit of wedge between these stores that you love and protect us, and start building resentment between people that you want to be your partners in this. So usually, I think, let's try another thing before regulation. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Nick, I'm 650 Marshall Street. And I have been, I've been watching that people are just dumping their cars beside my house and from my house and they leave the cars for even ten days. And I don't think we have the business to dump their cars like that. And I also expect that people, many people have, most of the houses have three car posts. So at least if somebody has four cars or five cars, consider that, you know, since they're a disney. But people just abstract the front of the house, they don't care. And ten, twenty days, I've seen that this is Chicago City of Houston or City of some other organizations. So those cars are lying down in different places. And if I'm not a main company, they'll ask my warehouse, my rest, everything. So I'm scared now that I think I'm kind of in a fix whether I should be probably putting them on.
Thank you.
I'm Margaret O'Donnell, I'm at 2731 Barber Lane. And I've lived there for four years in a new house. And I've had the one house on one side of the street parking in front of my house that whole time for up until about ten months ago when I finally had a confrontation with a neighbor and asked to please park in front of their house. And she said, "Get over it." You can park wherever you want. She was going to have teenagers and I just needed to get over. I have trees and so they, whatever, park in front of my house instead of their house and the cars don't get hogged. An issue that I see, because I'm part of a walking group, you'll see every morning that comes around here for forty-four years, is cleaning garages and moving your car right to it. That would be true of my neighbors. And not opening their gate, they've got to see a gate, they don't open it to put their cars in that night. I've lived in cities where you've got to get it off at night. I've had elderly people come to my house and they can't walk down the front walkway with a walker because the cars across the street are parked in front of my house. So a little lack of consideration, a PR campaign, I think would be really good. I've lived in places where we've had move-your-car, like six cars. That is not fun. And I live out there on the street. Get it off the street and pull it into your driveway at night. We're a medical family and you have an ambulance comes and goes, you're out of line. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jean Womack, I'm at the corner of Holtham and Brompton, 6732 Brompton. And I think I agree with a lot of folks and say we ought to be specific on this thing. I want to relate one little story that I've told Keith there. Not too long ago, I'm from a small town in Oklahoma. They have a cemetery about three miles out of town, used to be a gravel road. They backtop it, get rid of the dust, but speedhunts wanted to keep the kids from speeding at night. They passed a law two weeks ago getting rid of the speedhunts because it was slowing the funeral down. And I thought that was kind of ironic, it seemed to be in a hurry, no matter where we are, okay? And, you know, I think if we do a neighborhood watch type of thing, why can't we do a neighbor's traffic watch? How many of us know our neighbors? How many of us have talked to them? I have a neighbor, ten, I've been there twenty years. The last time I was on that famous task force ten years ago, they no one liked us, you know, because we could not satisfy everyone. But our neighbors grew up to have from two cars to five cars. Their driveway, you know, but they rotate their cars all the time. Now, the ultimate parking thing could be done at night with a big car, a small car. Get together with your neighbors, instead of parking two pickups across from each other. Say, "Hey, I'd like to park in your, in front of your house at night and you can park in front of mine." You know, this type of thing. Make some accommodations for that. The last thing, on the corner of Brompton and Holtham, we did not have a problem until the city of Houston put in a law. The stop signs moved people to other streets. Now that light is a magnet. And you know what's happening down on the corner of Brompton and north, end of the street down in Brompton? The new apartments are going up. That's going to be more cut-through because the light is going to allow that. You know, with the stop signs, people avoid it. So if we look at what the city does in terms of what they're doing to control traffic, if we move the cars, the speeds are going up because the state law says if you do a traffic survey and the speeds are so much higher, you have to raise the speed limit. So that, you know, they get what they want, so be careful of what you ask for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I speak from here?
No, come on, come on. Give me the name and address and you got to have them all ready.
Thank you. Joe Foster, 3715 Tankley. I think council very familiar with my position on this. It's specific overnight parking. Southside Place, which is at least as active in this Westview, has not allowed street parking for fifty years. They managed to put all their cars in their garages or garages. As a result, they don't have what is in the examiner every week for Westview. Two or three incidents of cars being sideswiped or broken into on the street in Westview, often even unlocked. So my point is that it is possible and quite feasible for people to park in their driveway and in all their garages. Many of the people on our street who park on the street don't use the driveways at all. It's just quite simply a case of not having to shuttle cars around because the first person to leave in the morning may not be the last car in the driveway. One other thing, when we lived at 4125 Holridge previously, due to a lot of small children playing on the street, my wife and I developed the habit of backing in to our garage, which we still do on Tankley, again, for the same reason. There are a lot of small children that play on the street. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anne Samuel, 3900 block of Swardmore. We're currently a cut-through to avoid university. I think there's a lot of benefit to potentially go to a side-by-side alternating situation. If that is a solution, I would strongly recommend that speedhunts go along with that. We already have a problem with people cutting through very quickly and a lot of kids on the street. And I think speeds will go up if you can get through more easily, which I'm all for being able to have clear roads, but I think we need to consider speedhunts.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, thank you for coming. I'm Carol from the 4100 block of Southwestern. And I favor street parking and I'd like to speak to a couple of issues related to it, namely lifestyle issues and safety. Relative to lifestyle issues, I'd like to present a couple of examples of why I think the street parking issue does affect lifestyle. The first one being a personal issue. My mother lived with us for a while. We took care of her in the last few months when she was undergoing hospice care. And during that time, we had her car, my husband's car, my car, my son's car, who was in college, the caregiver's car. We had hospice workers coming together and other professional people. We also had some very considerate neighbors who were most kind about our situation and considerably letting us park as we needed to. My mom passed and my son graduated college, he got married. Now we have Sunday or other dinners. Now, this isn't just my son and his wife. It's my son and his in-laws and the aunts and the uncles and numerous people coming to visit. There are other things that I've observed in the neighborhood. Church groups that have small group meetings in homes that involve ten or twelve people coming maybe once a month. Neighbors that have large parties. Neighbors that have events for their children. And this doesn't mean just the children, but the children and the parents of the children. And I'm sure that you can think of many other examples where you have these kinds of situations. And so I'm wondering what are we going to do about these families? And have we in fact gotten to a point where we'd have to ask permission to have a Sunday dinner? Or ask permission to have an open night's guest? I don't know how without street parking, other minds would be possible. Relative to safety, I'm very concerned about safety too. And I started thinking about it and I thought, have I ever heard of one fire that was not controlled because the fire truck couldn't get through? Or one neighbor that died because the ambulance didn't get through? And I went back looking in the neighborhood and observed the parking on the streets. And what I saw generally, not always, a hundred percent, but generally, I saw three cars, four cars, five cars in the block. They weren't struck anything. And so I think, and I would request, that before we come to some important conclusion on this, that we look at some historical data. And how many accidents have been factored? How many problems have come up because of this? And how many, on average, at a given point in time, on a given ordinary day, on average, children are supposed to be parked on the street? Thank you.
My name is Kathy Lager, I live at 3132 Sunset, which means my driveway is actually a mobile speedway. So you can imagine between the construction, the mistiming of the lights when parking on the street, I've been suffering a real mess recently. Couple of things that I had on my mind have to do with, I do agree that especially for the construction people and the lawn guys, they should be situated, situated there only on one side of the street. Do you believe that families should park in their own driveways? I believe that if guests are coming over, those are the people that should be parked down the street. We all want to have people over, that's one way to handle that. One of the things that I've noticed recently is especially over sort of by Albans behind where the churches are, Sunday mornings can be quite difficult to get down many of those streets. I'm not necessarily talking about Albans, but all of the other, I guess, every north-south streets. Actually, the other day, I was making the turn out to one of them and another car coming from the other direction was already down there. I'm having to back off the street because nobody can get through. One other thing is that I believe when I first moved here, there used to be a sign on Sunset that indicated that large vehicles, I'm thinking it was like eighteen-wheelers, were not allowed to go down Sunset. That sign seems, I don't believe it and it no longer exists. And I was wondering why that would be the case. And I believe that the penalty for families not parking in their own driveway would be for them to need to get a permit. And I do agree that a lot of times, people are not parking in front of their own house. They are parking in front of my house and others. Those are my thoughts tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I feel like I need to address the people back here rather than the people here. So maybe I'll stand this way.
It's okay, it'll all be okay, you can face here.
Okay. I wanted to first say that I'm Sharon Brack at 2617 Sunset Boulevard. I live near Kirby. And I will tell you, I don't think there is a one-answer solution to the parking problem. We have fought on Sunset for the last twenty years to keep our street open for traffic. At that point in Westview, the street is not a two-lane street with streetcars parked on either side. Most of you will not remember, but the Sunset Tea Room operated on the corner. When that tea room was there, it's when we were on television, when we went to city council, when we had those signs erected that are no longer in force. But if you look at Sunset, the first two blocks down, they say parking by permit only, Monday through Friday, except Saturdays and Sundays. That was enforced for three or four years until the Sunset Tea Room actually moved because they had to find their own parking. We could not literally get in our driveways. They were parked both sides of the street, all the way down to the park. You could not get a fire truck through there. The lady that spoke before about fire trucks getting through, it is a problem in some areas. Our streets are narrow on that part of Westview. So I would say to you that maybe the permit only on some areas of Westview might be a good answer. Those permits, we pay ten dollars a piece for. The police did enforce it. The signs are still there. They have mildew on them because they have not been cleaned. But when it was enforced, it kept our street open. It was not both sides and we made an agreement with our neighbors that every so many years, the signs would flip to the other side so that if needed to have parking or felt like it wasn't fair, that the signs were changed. So I have documentation, asking about documentation. We also fought, and it was approved by council in 2006, that we would not have entrance and exit onto Sunset at that corner. We fought to get the bank there. If you go by, you'll notice that the bank has entrance and exit onto Kirby. The only reason that Sunset, Seventy's and the Smoothie King are where they are now is because it was grandfathered in.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Katie Hill and I'm on the 6500 block of Community. I'm a thirty-year resident of West University. Yes, I grew up on the east side of Westview and now own a home with my husband on the west side. I and my husband Chris Hill have the following statements to add in opposition of parking regulations. We are opposed to any broad-stroke street parking regulations because of the diversity of street widths in our city. There is no need to regulate the streets that are wide enough to park cars on both sides of the street and still fit emergency vehicles. The majority of complaints that I've heard today and in the online comments are centered around only a handful of streets. Many of the Westview homes, both old and new constructions, do not accommodate the amount of cars driven by an average family, even if the garage and driveway are fully utilized. Our house has a one-car driveway and we have two cars. I have no other choice but to park on the street. Any regulations demanding limitations to street parking would promote more yard space to be used for parking, which is expensive for homeowners and frankly unsightly. Cars on the street help keep speeding down and speeding is also a large safety concern. We are opposed to any limitations on night parking. A ban on nighttime parking adds no value to the majority of the neighborhood. In fact, it inconveniences more residents than the daytime regulations since that's when most residents are home and also the time when most residents entertain. It is irrelevant to look to Southside as an example for banning nighttime parking because they have different home constructions. A citywide nighttime ban might work for them, it would not work for us. We are opposed to single-sided parking and this is simply not needed for most of the neighborhood. Many streets are wide enough to support cars on both sides. This would shift one person's parking problem to another resident, decreasing our sense of community and increasing animosity amongst neighbors. It also requires unattractive signage. If indeed this is an issue to some of our residents on the most narrow streets, then only those streets should be considered for any solution. The majority of Westview residents do not live on these narrow streets and should not have to be negatively affected by their complaints. Take care of the safety issues on the few streets that are affected, but do not put unnecessary regulations on the many streets that are not. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm Jane. I live at thirty-seven fifteen Riceville Boulevard. I've lived there sixty-two years. And it's, when it fills between fifteen to three and three-thirty, you cannot drive down Riceville Boulevard. The police have started, they have signs that say, "Be not park here." For like four houses up, I'm one of the four. And it has helped tremendously. And they now are starting to give tickets, the potential to give tickets. Give tickets and make these people realize that they parked in front of my driveway. I cannot get out, not with a car here and here and here. It's in front of them and a lot of people. But it's helped with them. But the next thing is, when you turn, like where the old Janeway was on Riceville Boulevard, they park those big giant trailers for yard people. You cannot get down the street. So if there should be, I know they need to come, because they could not park in there, that's almost the same.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Eric. I'm Zafra. I live at thirty-two fifteen Nottingham and have been a resident for fourteen years in West U. I'd kind of reiterate what Katie said earlier. You know, I oppose any kind of parking regulation. And I'd also kind of reiterate what Carol said. I'd be curious, you know, what documentation do you have if there actually is a problem? You know, can we see some statistics? Can we take a quantitative approach to how many incidents have we really had? I've parked on the street for fourteen years and nobody once had an incident. So I'm only one person, you know, not statistically or other than. But I would be curious to know. The other thing I would like to know, as you guys have a good study, is how many people have a single-car driveway or don't have a garage? I'm in both of those categories. And so if you get concerned that my wife and I will start to do the car shuffle, we don't have any kids, but I know my neighbors have two, three, or four more cars than we do, does that start to create a significant problem? So again, I'd have the quantitative approach.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Roberts. I live with my wife and two daughters at sixty-four thirty-six Community Drive. And we've been fortunate enough to live in West U since ninety-two. You know, the streets in some places are smaller. We own a community. I haven't noticed many problems. The biggest problem sometimes is courtesy. Sometimes neighbors will park behind our, where we couldn't get out, so you could knock on somebody's door. You know, I think, again, I've enjoyed living in our community because it's a little eclectic places and people tend to get along. I was kind of surprised when I was told another lady to get over. But I would kind of fall into the line that if some streets are in the line of the community, I think most of us would go on next door and tell our neighbors, "Could you move your car? Do you mind if we have someone park over here?" So I would kind of fall, I believe that as a business, that some streets definitely change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Spiros Marakos, fifty-nine thirty-two Holtham Street. I'm not finding a parking day here, but I have lived in the community constituents as a graduate student of all the car for several years. And that is the closest that I've come feeling like I've been in the police state because you exactly own the car, you basically have the car. And I was seeing the non-estaying, you know, that car was seen parked on the street with no permit, six nights, six to five nights a month wide. And I can't move it. So that's basically what, that's the customary deal here. And what I would like to ask the city council to do is, as you consider the need for all the citizens, the three minutes that we have here, please go slowly. You know, start, if you decide to do something, go first with the more modern measures and leave the draconian measures for later. And just if you want to see, you know, how we park here, we are or not, we have clean children, six-year-olds. My wife parks in the garage. I prefer to park on our wide way, not tie the gates. And sometimes with the street, just because they've got a one-the-cars thing and now with the kids, you know, because sometimes things can happen. I don't want to be a guy, so figure it out.
Thank you.
I'm Elizabeth Son. I live at twenty-seven twenty-six Centenary. Centenary seems to be a popular street with issues, but that's not a real one issue. We own four other properties in West U. We also have one on Roxton, in the twenty-six hundred block of Roxton, that has parking just on one side of the street. And anyone that is not happy with that situation should have to sometime. Fortunately, it's a real property for us, but it's a real problem. We have a neighbor that will very kindly move when we ask, but they have a two-car garage, two-car driveway, side-by-side. And they still park on the two streets. So that seems somewhat unfair. It's a real problem on Roxton. Centenary, we do have a narrow street. I'm a manager. I have a small car, but I do see people struggling. I would ask you, I think it's worth while considering asking people to park in their own garages and their own driveways at night. I don't know how many people have to live with a house that the street sweeper can never sweep the street because it's always a car in front of your home. Those situations are also unpleasant. I do understand that some people have extra cars. I have a very close friend that lives on Auburn that has three cars and a single-car garage. And my neighbor should find all their cars in the driveway if you want. So I think it's possible that people choose to do parking what I consider a option.
Thank you very much.
We're up on our time. We are, give you a little idea here. We've got one more date at six o'clock tonight. And if you did not get to speak, I saw you. If you want to come back, I'll let you speak again. But if you did not get to speak, you do want to speak, come back at six o'clock this evening. And I'm sorry I'll let you do that too. If you want to come back, I'll let you speak again. We will culminate everything further. And if you did not get further and have some thoughts, please feel free to submit them to the city. We'll include them in the debate. And if you want to come on back to a meeting before we finish, do that too. Tell Michael or Rachel to put it in. We will culminate and, excuse me, after the third meeting, we'll get our equipment, the new traffic engineer. We will hold workshops at council and you're all invited to vote. You've been a very good group, very thoughtful to your fellow citizens, and I appreciate your participation. Thank you.
And in closing, here's the email address if you didn't get to speak but would like to submit your comments. And there's also a comment harness outside. Thank you very much.